Good evening. Welcome to the Troy City Council meeting for October 4th, 2010. We welcome you all. This evening, we are pleased to have with us Pastor Phillips of the Evanswood Church of God, who will provide us with an invocation. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Pastor?
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight. We pray for your wisdom, your guidance on the city council of our great city. We ask this in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Phillips. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltrameany?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Hauerlag?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Quorum present. We begin this evening with certificates of recognition and special presentations. And so I, therefore, I call for Maria J. Larson-Williams, real estate specialist for the United States Postal Service. She is going to talk to us about Troy's main post office property. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Council. My name is Marla Larson-Williams. I'm with the Postal Service, and I handle real estate in a five-state region. What I wanted to fill the community in on is the growing pains and the right-sizing pains of the Postal Service. I wanted to share with you that the Postal Service is not immune from the economic difficulties shared by communities and other businesses. The Postal Service has been experiencing a down, or a decline, in our mail volumes. Now, part of that is due to technology, the email and so on. And some of the youth just don't mail as much as they used to. A lot of people are really into their technology. As such, a lot of people pay their bills online as well. Those all used to be by putting a stamp on the envelope and mailing it through the system. So our revenues have decreased over the years. But also, over the years, the Postal Service has also done a lot to automate our operation. So as a result of our automation, we were able to move the mail faster with less amount of square footage necessary in a particular building or location. So combine the two, where we started and worked well with our automation and also the decline of the mail volume. Our buildings are much too large for our operation as it is today. As a result, the Postal Service, we started looking at what our inventory is. Nationwide, we control about 40,000 buildings. And as such, we have buildings that, over the years, we used to always build new, bigger post offices. Well, now, we're having to right-size. And look at our operation. How can we, I don't want to say consolidate, but how can we maximize our portfolio? So what we started doing in some of the major metropolitan areas, and Troy is one of the areas that we looked at, but we also looked at areas in St. Louis, in Chicago, suburbs of Chicago, and so on. Where can we move some of our operations from one-owned building to another-owned building, and then sell the asset that we no longer need? We looked at that from a financial standpoint, and also logistically, because it's not just the bricks and mortar that we have to look at. We have to look at the transportation costs of moving the mail back and forth, and our carriers delivering the mail, and making sure that we don't impact the delivery of the mail to the public. And still have a main post office for the community of Troy. And that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight, because what we're looking at is to begin marketing the sale of what you know as the Troy Main Post Office. Now, that building is a little over 40,000 square feet. We can move our carriers from that location to another owned location, and then only need a retail in what we would consider retail, which the public would know as the Main Post Office, where you go for the window services to buy our services and also your PO boxes. We really need approximately 7,000 square feet. So the decision has been made that we would sell the building, but we would be looking for an alternate location for the Main Post Office to service Troy. Now, one of two things can happen. If we find a buyer that's interested in buying the building, but yet keeping the Postal Service as a tenant, then we would definitely be interested in talking with them to do a sale/leaseback. However, if the buyer is not interested in doing that, we would be looking for another location, and we will be working with the city and the city officials, trying to find a building that would meet our needs, like I said, of about 7,000 square feet. Now, the process for that, just to let you know, it's not where we just go ahead and find a building and move into it. We advertise, asking for people to submit their buildings for our consideration, and we work with the city and provide notification to all the members of the community as to what buildings were submitted for consideration, and then what building was selected by the Postal Service. And that process is part of our community contact requirements. But also, what's interesting, what I want to try to explain is that we're not leaving. We're not going to have, we're not going to close a main post office. We will continue to have a main post office for Troy, and we will try to find the best location. If we can't stay where we are, we will do our best to find a location that will work for all. As far as the timing of this, right now, I'd like to, probably later this week or early next week, actually, we will begin marketing the building. But as far as trying to find a new location, until I have a potential buyer, we would not be willing to commit to a new lease somewhere else. Again, we don't want to have an empty building. That is not something the Postal Service would like, and I'm sure it's not something the city would like to see either. So we would be trying to dovetail those two processes together. And the other note I can say is, being a federal entity, the Postal Service is tax-exempt. So if we find a buyer for that building, and it can go back on the tax rolls, it could help generate some revenue for the city. So that's a positive. And if we lease it, if we sell and lease it, as far as the real estate taxes, that's the function of the rent dollar. So we don't declare tax exemption when we lease. So that's what the plan is right now. Timing, again, we'll start marketing when we have a buyer. We'll make sure that we communicate with the city and the community, make sure we have press releases. I assure you, no one in this community is going to find, going to the door and saying, "We've closed," or "We've moved." We will make sure the community is well-aware as to where we're going in the timing for that. And if I have, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening. You, too. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes that portion of the meeting, where we have special presentations, and so, and we have no carryover for items or public hearings. Before we go to public comment, I need to suspend, move to suspend the rules to adjust our time because of the number of people that have signed up. Do we have a support?
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we suspend the rules. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the suspension of rules?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes?
Councilmember Beltrameany?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Hauerlag?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I move to change the time allotment as per our rules, with, that there are more than 15 people signed up to speak, and to change the time from five minutes per person to three minutes per person. Do I have a support?
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we adjust the time allotment for allowing people to speak in our public comment from five minutes to three minutes. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameany?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Hauerlag?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Before we begin public comment, two items of business I need to attend to. First of all, we have some people with us this evening who have not attended before, and we ask anyone who has a cellphone, electronic device, to turn it off completely. It does affect our sound system, even if it's on vibrate. Secondly, that we ask, when people speak under public comment, that they be courteous to each other, and it's not necessary to clap after people have spoken. And also, to choose your words carefully. We've had occasion in our last few meetings where we've had some people get excited about something, and then later regret perhaps things that they've said. So we ask that you think about that during the public comment, that you're right to speak, and you will have your three minutes. Because we have so many people that are going to speak, I'm going to do what we've done previously, and that is call off five names and have the people line up in the aisle behind each other. When we get to the fifth person, I'll call five more, and that way, it moves along quite efficiently. Everyone has their chance to speak. So I'll begin with the first five names, and if they would line up in order, please, at the microphone. Julie, Julie Sigler, Trudy Barone, Audrey Zambroski, Taylor Bouquette, and Gordon Shepke. If those people would sign up in that order, please. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Yes, Julie? Go ahead.
I'm Julie Sigler. My family feels fortunate to have lived 32 years in Troy. I want you to know that I remain impressed by how consistently well the city council and city staff manage city resources. At this time of diminishing funds, I realize city services have to be curtailed. Although, I was shocked that Troy Public Library stayed on the hit list, what with the long-accepted national goal of giving every resident of the U.S. equal access to information. I want to speak to you now, as one Troy voter to another. I urge each of you to accept the need to keep the Troy Public Library open. I urge each of you to accept the only funding, funding option that was presented in good faith, and the only funding option that will guarantee the continued existence of Troy Public Library. I urge each of you to vote yes on Library Milage Proposal 1. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Trudy Barone.
My name is Trudy Barone, and my family and I have lived in Troy since 2001. One of the reasons we came here was due to the excellent school system. It was number one on a short laundry list we were looking for. My children use the library in order to complete assignments and thankfully graduate from Troy schools. Personally, I'm a big reader, and I've spent many happy hours at the Troy Library, not only looking for interesting things to read, but as a volunteer at both the used bookstore and at the library. There's a wealth of information that's available at our library, not only books and magazines, but just about every available source of media there is. DVDs of popular movies and television shows, CDs of modern and classic music, books on tape, and the ability to learn a foreign language. These resources are available to Troy residents, for the most part, without charge, pretty much at the touch of a finger. As an individual, I'm not able to replicate even a tiny portion of those resources by myself. That's why, as a community, we need the library. There are many in our community who are underemployed or unemployed, and the availability of computers and resource materials are essential to them in job searches. Without those resources, where would they go? I'd like to go on record as a supporter of Proposal 1 in the November elections, and I would urge those hearing me to vote yes on Proposal 1. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Audrey Zambroski.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about the proposals also, and I read about them. My biggest interest is that no information has come out. If any one of these proposals passes, who is, where is the library going to be? In the existing building? Will it be leased, or will it be purchased? Or, like I've heard from some people giving me calls, are we building a new library? I do not know, but I know it was in your speech, Mayor, two years ago. Do we have to purchase, repurchase the books for the library, being that they are city-owned right now, and we've paid for them once? The CDs, the DVDs, the reference books, the tables, the chairs, the bookshelves, the desks, computers, everything? No one is coming out forward. And if it has to be a new library, then that means we have to go out for a bond issue next. And I don't think that's going to pass. So I have a saying. When I'm in a store, or wanting to buy something new, and I look at it twice, and the third time, I say, "Well, when in doubt, do without," and I put it back. The same goes for any proposals. If I'm not getting the information, and we don't know what's going on, then vote no on every one of them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Taylor Bouquette.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Boak. I am 10 years old and a fifth grader at Shorter Elementary. You may not think this because of my height, but I really am 10. I participated in the summer reading program for eight summers. My summer between second and third grade, I checked out and read 222-chapter books. My grandmother often takes me and my sister to lunch and to the library to check out books each week. It is one of my favorite memories with my grandmother, and one of my favorite memories with the library. Each year, it seemed to discover a new style of writing. Nonfiction, historical fiction, fantasy, biography, autobiography, and poetry, to name a few. Without the library, I would not have been able to learn all I know about the Presidents of the United States or Greek mythology, two of my favorite types of books to check out. The library has been with me through all of my phases of reading. Dinosaurs, Scooby-Doo, magic school blows, American shellers, A to Z mysteries, Harry Potter, Greek mythology, Presidents of the United States, and now, the Hardy Boy mysteries. I average two library Hardy Boy books a week, or on the weekend, I should say. Each year, my mom, dad, sister, and I check out an average of I don't know how many books from the Troy Public Library. If our library doesn't have a book I'm looking for, the nice woman at the counter will help me order them from the library. The library matters for children like me all throughout the city of Troy. We need a library that is close by and full of great books. Thank you.
Thank you. It'll help you heal well. Mr. Shepke, before you begin, let me call the next five people, and then your time will begin. Okay? Paul Beck, Wayne Stutzman, Marcella Doherty, Marvin Reinhardt, Kevin Miller, and Susan Rothbus. Mr. Shepke?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Gordon Shepke. I've been at Troy 41 years. Like the post office, a lot of us are hurting. We're, we're running into a lot of adversity in our lives, especially with these bad times. At the last council meeting, I came to this body with a series of questions reflecting my concerns, seeking out what legal ramifications and powers the new proposed library board would have, and what potential effect it would have on the taxpayers at Troy. After finding out, I encourage the voters to vote no on all four proposals. After hearing the shocking and staggering potential cost, lack of accountability of a board...
Mr. Shepke?
Yes?
Would you back up? Our system has been fixed now, so people can hear you very well.
In my back...
Our old system...
I don't want to blow anybody away.
I know.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead. I apologize.
I'm sorry. Anyway, anyway, after hearing of the shocking and staggering potential costs, the lack of accountability of a board, the lack of transparency in city control a board would inflict upon the citizenry, it has caused me to have nothing but personal disgust and disappointment with the, with the power grab and property grab of this board. The potential downside of all four proposals are extremely costing, costly and staggering. The voters of Troy are being asked to vote on these issues, on these four proposals, and make reasonable judgments in a fog of deception, omissions, by using the library closing as a hot button of emotion, and holding the library hostage by the budget and the administration. The separation of powers from the city to the library board is going to be costly, and the buying back of what we already owned is ridiculous, and in the form of books, computers, furniture, et cetera, and additional insurance by the board for, for whatever their means are, courting and tax purposes, all these bureaus, all these things will have to be duplicated. The cutting off of the Historical Museum and Nature Center that is now under the library board could be a fatal blow in these bad economic times. Vote no on all four increases, and make the city continue to run our beautiful library, and help prevent a potential of a 30.6% tax increase in, in the, in city taxes. That would be another $86,000 in 10 years. Thank you.
Next, I will hear from Paul Beck.
Good evening. I'm opposed to any type of milage increase at this point because of the economic conditions, number one. Number two, that we've, we can do away with other things that we're, we're funding that we don't need, like the Transit Center. And if we could get a halfway decent explanation of why we don't have money to run the library from the city managers and his two assistants, which is very difficult to get any type of information on funding or spending and cuts, I'm totally opposed to all four of the milage proposals. Thank you.
And next, we'll hear from Wayne Stutzman.
Good evening. Under the auspices of never believe anything you read or everything you read, I just came here tonight to find out if this is all true. Council plans efficiency study. International City Management Association to evaluate the way city current, currently It says in here, where is it? For example, the ICMA study would document current police patrol performance and workload levels, establish a range of performance levels and objectives for the department, identify opportunities to improve efficiency with existing resources, and estimate manpower requirements and associated costs needed to achieve specified performance objectives. We have $400,000 a year sitting over here. We have a gentleman that's been on the police department for X number of years, and now is on council. Why do we need to spend between $196,000 and $211,000 for this study? I would like an answer. And, one more thing, I would like that 10-year-old young man right there to be on this, if it has to be. Why do we need it? I have a minute and a half, and anybody can answer that.
If you'd like to stay for that agenda item, it is on the agenda tonight.
Thank you.
It is. Yes. We have Marcella Doherty.
That's my legal name. Good evening. I've lived in Troy for 38 years, raised my children here, and I am here to talk about the Proposal 1 to save the Troy Public Library. I think we'll all agree that these are strange times. Who would have ever thought that the big three, two out of the big three, would be needing to be bailed out? And who amongst us would ever think that the Troy Library would be closing? We've always lived in what we thought were a prosperous community. As I've been out and out the community in recent weeks, I've noticed that there's a lot of misinformation and a lot of anger. And what the Troy voters need to do is focus, and focus on what is true and what is real. The first thing is, the library will close. It is slated to close June 30th, at the end of the Business Day 2011. Second, the library is closing due to declining housing values. I don't think there's anybody here who either singly or collectively in this room can be held responsible for declining housing values. We have less money to work with, so things have to be cut. The problem is far, more far-reaching and complex than just Troy, and we should stop blaming each other and pointing fingers. Third, we should deal with correct information, not things that might happen, are possibly going to happen, could happen. We need to deal with the truth and the facts. And one of that is that Proposal 1 is the true, researched, dedicated proposal that will keep the library open, and we need to pass that. Fourth, if we have a dedicated library, then we will not have to worry about the ups and downs of our budget with city council. Fifth, there are all sorts of suggestions floating around that are not based in truth. For instance, people have said to me, "The people that use the library should pay for it." Well, first of all, that's illegal. We can't charge for a public library. That's against the law. Second of all, even if we could, what we would have would be a country club library. Only the elite could come. What would we have to charge for a library card to keep it open? And the very people that would need the library the most would be unable to use it. That idea scares me, because I don't think people realize the true worth of a library. Sixth, while it is upsetting to a lot of people that our library is now closed on Saturday, it is important to realize that that, that recommendation was made with a lot of thought and care. It is my understanding that it was made by the administration of the library, not by city council, and it was taken into consideration, the reduced budget, having to keep the library open for 55 hours a week, and also, that Saturday is the biggest drain on an already strained budget. And, am I out of time? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marvin Reinhardt.
Madam, Madam Mayor and the rest of the council, I, too, thought it was kind of funny that for six, five to six years, we knew we were going to have a budget crisis, and now we're going to figure out how to be more efficient. And then the biggest joke is on the next page, where it talks about the Troy Transit Center, where the planning commission has no say whether or not they're really going to build it. It's up to the city. So all these guys working on the planning commission, paying all these extra fees, are jokes. You guys are just cover for whatever the most expensive man in Michigan is, is the city manager of. Because we do have the president of the MLL up here forever, never been president of that organization?
One year. No more.
So that organization doesn't teach efficiency, and this is the model that this city follows, is the MLL model. Okay? So it doesn't want efficiency, because it started it six years ago. Then it mentioned that $100 million was pumped into Automation Alley this year. Does that look great over there on that side of Troy? And you want to vote for more money to go into this city, so they can give it to Automation Alley? Because if they don't have to fund the library with the city budget, they're funding with this side budget. And I tell you, we have Forbes in this city. We have four billionaires that if they don't think that the city is worth $2 to $3 million of their PIN money, why should I vote yes on anything in this city? Because they're the ones who get the tax breaks. Because I've asked, how much tax breaks did Little Stewart get, the DDA get? How many taxes? In fact, here it goes again. City gives businesses more tax, tax breaks. So that means you common folk out there make it up. And I tell you what, you tell me who you trust in this city, you give them $2 million. You tell me. I put my phone number in the newspapers. You can find me. Call me up. Tell me who you trust. You guys have a good day, and I'm sad that the Troy Post Office doesn't even believe in Troy no more. You guys have a good day.
Kevin Miller, please, our next speaker.
Thank you. Regarding the Troy Library proposal, I was...
Regarding the Troy Library proposal, I was pretty much undecided until I was accosted by the person in front of the Troy Library yesterday claiming to be a friend of the library and claiming to support the library but was neither supportive nor very friendly. They handed me a paper from the Troy Citizens United so filled with inaccuracies that I had to ignore the whole thing. And I found out that there's three proposals that were put on the ballot, if true, just to confuse things. I was really siding on the no, vote no on the proposal one side until I read all of this and I looked at all the underhanded ways and the lies and the things that are putting out there, that any affiliation with the no-tax people make me feel like I should reach for holy water and a cross. I can't understand how any upstanding Troy voter could be on the same side with these people when they put out the lies and they seem to have no class at all.
Before I call the next speaker up, you can move up to the microphone, Susan. I'm going to call the next five names, okay? Behind Susan. Let's have, okay, Minish Baxi, Kim Yancey, Edna Abraham, James Savage, and Sharon McDonald. Thank you. And you are, Susan Othres? Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you to the five city council members who did want us to speak, and I apologize to the two who chose not to have us speak, but will try to make it worth your while. The city of Troy has been my home for 25 years. I've always been proud to say I live in Troy, Michigan. Recently, I found myself embarrassed to admit I am from a city that, number one, would close its public library, and, number two, would allow not one, not two, but three questionable citizen attempts to undermine the election process in our city. Unlike citizens who believe it is possible to produce more with less, I agree with the city council that you must make cuts to the budget. They were left with no choice but to make cuts when the millage was defeated in February. With decreasing property values upon which a percentage is taxed, it makes sense that the city has fewer dollars to stretch over the same number of services. No one wants services cut, especially the ones they use. That's not an example of the city staff or the city council lying. That is not a case of expecting to discover a windfall on June 30th to keep the library open, as some people have told me. The Save the Troy Library volunteers are not trying to bully anyone into paying higher taxes. It is just a fact that you can't have a library, a police force, road services, et cetera, without having the funds to pay for them. Although I wouldn't have chosen to close the library as a solution to too few tax dollars, the voters who didn't show up at the polls in February proved the case that doing nothing is making a decision. Left with that decision, we now have a chance for a do-over. November 2nd, the voters of Troy have an opportunity to vote yes on proposal one and no on the other three deceptive proposals. A strong grassroots cadre of volunteers is successfully knocking on doors. Once the votes are tallied, I believe Troy voters will have shown they are smarter than the anti-library gang gives us credit. We, the voters, will know the other three proposals were put there to confuse. We will know proposal one is the only proposal intended to keep the library open, and we will show the city council and the city management the will of the people is to keep our wonderful Troy Library open. Finally, to those who are conducting their disinformation campaign, be aware that Troy voters are becoming more informed every day. The heart and soul of any democracy is a well-informed electorate. That is why we cannot do without our library, and it is also why we won't have to. Vote yes on proposal one and no on all other proposals. It is our responsibility as members of this democracy. Thank you.
Before I call the next speaker up, I should clarify something, ma'am. The two members of council that voted no were voting no on changing it from five minutes to three minutes. And I believe their intention was that they wanted five minutes for each speaker instead of three. So I want to clarify that.
I appreciate that.
Yes, it was not to not have you speak. Yes, our next speaker is Minish Baxi.
Yes. Madam Mayor, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, let us be very clear. Whenever you increase taxes, you destroy jobs. I think there should be no doubt ever left in anybody's mind that that is always the case. Let me give you three quick points here. The first is businesses are hurting. How many of you have been to Cafe Zuzu on Long Lake and Rochester Road? If you haven't been, it is too late. They already closed the doors in August. I don't even want to imagine what's going on with the businesses that are in the Rochester Road between Waters and Big Beaver. And if that is the case, these people who are going to be seeing more increased taxes are going to see less jobs, which is exactly what we don't want in the city. Let me talk about the second thing. Some of you have praised the local bureaucracy. I'll give you an example of the other side. One of my friends owns an Indian restaurant, and he wanted to open up the patio area so that in summer, people could come and eat outside. But it took him five months to finally get the permits because he got the runaround from everybody possible. He applied in April and of August, he got the permit. Now, that should tell you there is a lot of waste going on that people are not paying attention to. Let me talk about the third thing. The third thing comes from the Trojan horse, the story that everybody else knows what happened. The Troy citizens thought they had won, but unfortunately, the Trojan horse was a disguise, and it almost obviously killed because the Greeks had a plan. Well, in February, the Troy voters defeated the proposal for increase, 63 percent. So every single voter who defeated that proposal of increased taxes, I encourage you to look at this again and vote no on all the four proposals because we have a plan which will keep the library open 55 hours. We do have the petition for that. We can get you more details on it, but please remember, if you voted no on taxes before, please vote no again. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kim Yancey. Please say your last name for me.
It's Yancey.
Thank you.
I'm used to it.
I apologize.
No problem. I'm here today to support proposal one. My husband and I moved to Troy 19 years ago as a recently married couple. We liked the convenient location, the nice housing, and the reputation of the school system. In the years since, I have found that the city has also provided many extras that made Troy a great city in which to live. Troy was a vibrant city. I remember driving up Crook's Road with my nephews and making a game out of counting the buildings under construction. A few years ago, I participated in the Troy Futures Project, in which the citizens envisioned a city that would lead us into the 21st century. Today, Troy, instead of being a city of the future, is in danger of being a city of old news. The latest national data from the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences showed that library visits and circulation climbed nearly 20 percent from 1999 to 2008. Since then, experts say, technology has continued to drive in-person visits, circulation, and usage, and yet the city is planning to close this vital resource. I believe there are certain obligations that are a part of being a member of a community. Otherwise, what's the point? One of them is joining together to provide, as a group, valuable services that none of us could afford on our own but that make our lives significantly better. A library is one of these services. I heard a shocking story today. A house burned to the ground in Tennessee while firefighters watched because the homeowner did not pay the annual $75 firefighter fee that was, had been requested but was an optional fee. Is that where Troy is heading? It didn't occur to me to check when I moved to Troy if the city had a library, because every city had a library as far as I knew. If proposal one does not pass, I hope potential residents are equally as thoughtless as we were when we moved to Troy. Otherwise, we're going to watch our property values drop below those of the neighboring cities that will have a better housing value. Vote yes on proposal one.
Our next speaker is Edna Abraham.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I need not tell you, Mayor and city council members, that we live in strange and unprecedented times. We have not seen a financial crisis in this nation since 1929, basically. And Troy is no exception to this rule. We've been hit hard here in terms of property values, and I think we all know what it's done to the city's budget. After many study sessions this spring, as much as I hated to hear it, there just wasn't enough money to cover all the city services that we've become accustomed to. And unfortunately, the library fell victim to that. What I think is even more shocking than having the library fall victim to the budget cuts is the instability that has occurred since these four library proposals have come onto the November 2nd ballot. Proposal one, which was developed and researched with library law experts and conferred with library directors of neighboring cities, was developed very carefully to make sure that we could have a library that was funded for the sustainable future, .9885 mils. After that proposal petition was submitted to the city clerk's office, three other proposals, very similar, showed up. However, three people that have submitted those petitions aren't necessarily standing by them. So why were these petitions brought forward? Why do we have four library millages on the ballot? The only reason I can see is to muddy the waters. Troy citizens deserve to know the facts. And the facts came out in the spring that there just isn't any money. There is no hidden money. That is why the library is not being funded. Proposal one would establish an independent public library, very similar to what is already in existence in Rochester Hills, Bloomfield Hills, West Bloomfield, Warren. .9885 mils. That's $100 if your taxable value of your home is $100,000. $100 investment to make sure that your property values don't drop any further, and if you have children that live in the city of Troy and that use the public school systems, that use the library as its resources, can continue to do so. I strongly urge people who are seeking the truth and the facts about Troy city budget and proposal one to go to savetroylibrary.com and vote yes on proposal one on November 2nd and reject the other three library proposals. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from James Savage.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. You know, since I came to the media, I'm starting to get really concerned because we have another issue that is tearing this community apart. We are having people blaming people, and this is not good. And it seems we never get very long before we have one of these issues where our community is being torn apart. Now, when proposal one was introduced, I figured I would support it, and I spoke to quite a few people who were organizing it, and it seemed to me like this was the only way to save the library. But two weeks ago, when council voted six to nothing to go ahead with the Transit Center, I changed my mind. In one and a half hours of discussion on the Transit Center, no one talked about moving passengers. No one mentioned cost, except there was a mention of if we have to have a half-day meeting, it would cost a minimum of $10,000. The city of Troy has already spent and earmarked millions of dollars, and the spending will never end. Not one council member stated why they support it or how it will benefit the people of Troy. The Transit Center is an excuse to waste taxpayer money. The more money government gets, the more they will waste. So the issue now is really, it's a choice of the library or the Transit Center because we have the money. If we have the money for the Transit Center, so it's a matter of either or. We have to get the message across to all levels of government, stop wasting our money. No more threats of laying off cops or cutting services. If anyone needs a reminder of government waste, just drive along Big Beaver. So now, I urge the supporters of the library, which I am one, to reconsider your position, and city workers and police officers and all the Troy voters to vote no on any new taxes until council is prepared to contain the waste. Thank you.
Before I call the next speaker, I'll call the next five names before Sharon McDonald Arjun Namanani, Justin Koven, Tim Burns, County Commissioner Tim Burns, Thomas Burke, Janice Daniels. Would those five people please line up in that order? Yes, Sharon McDonald?
Good evening. My name is Sharon McDonald. I've lived in Troy for five years, and I have two children in elementary school here. I'm here to talk about the library. I've heard several people say it, that we all want the library to stay open next July, but we have different philosophies and we go about it in different ways. And I think that's true. On the one side, we have the citizens to save the Troy Library, and the other side, we have the anti-tax-at-any-cost crowd. The citizens to save the Troy Library worked hard on proposal one. They worked for months with professionals to come up with the best possible plan to keep the Troy Library open, keep it from being closed next July. They formulated a workable, responsible plan and wrote proposal one and got the necessary signatures to put it on the ballot. The anti-tax folks concocted a cute way to subvert democracy. I don't know how else to call it. They spent two minutes maybe writing up three fake petitions with language that was blatantly, probably proudly stolen from proposal one. They lied to the people signing the three petitions about their purpose, and then they got those three fake library proposals put on our ballot. The purpose was to confuse the voters and to not allow an up or down vote to save the library. And my question is, if the aim is so just, why all the lying and subterfuge? How can it be that these people call themselves patriots when they won't allow a fair vote on an issue that's so important to democracy as saving a wonderful library from closing? How could they do such a thing? After the February millage election failed, I asked John Witt in this room why he and Troy Citizens United had to cheat so much to win, why they had to deceive and manipulate to get their way, and he told me, that's how you play the game. That was the answer. And that's what the mandate petition and the three fake proposals are all about. It's a game. It's a game to thwart an ideology that doesn't care about books and libraries and fair play and voting in a democracy, because why can't we just vote? Some are against, some are for. Let's put it to a vote. But no, we have to play a game. Troy citizens have two real democratic choices in November when it comes to saving our library. Either you vote yes on proposal one and no on the other fake proposals to save our library, or you vote no and the library closes. That's it. Those are the choices, and we all have to decide which side we're on. I want to save the library, so I will vote yes on proposal one and I will vote no on the others. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Arjun.
Arjun Namanani.
Namanani, yes.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and council. Hello, my name is Arjun Namanani. I'm a sophomore at Troy High School, and I'm in the Troy Robotics Team. I'm wearing the shirt right now. Basically, we build a robot and we go to competitions across Michigan. And we have, we're not just a building team. We also have animation, a management team, and a team that builds our website. And we need a place to meet, and usually we meet at our school, Troy High or Athens, but sometimes we need a facility that has both resources and a quiet place to work. And the library is a great place for that, and that's why we really need the library to research. Like, sometimes we go there and we want to research about basic electrical or mechanical components, and the books are right there. We ask, we ask one of the administrators where we can find this kind of things, and they tell us, and it's really great. But if the library closes, we don't have that kind of facility, and we'll have to go to other cities. I don't know how we'll manage. And it's not just the team. Myself, I had a research paper the other week on a book, and I went to the library to find the book to do the research paper on. And next year, I'll be a junior and I'll be taking SAT and ACT, and I'll need the library's resources to research for those kind of things. Basically, the Troy Public Library serves as a medium for our success as individuals... Basically, the Troy Public Library serves as a medium for our success as individuals and as a robotics team as a whole. Please keep our library. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Austin.
Justin.
Pardon?
It's Justin Koven.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Vote yes, proposal one. There's obviously been a lot of deception. There've been very erudite speakers before me. I won't repeat what they've said. Proposal one is the actual library proposal. The others were obviously put there to deceive. There are people out there deceiving you, whether you are aware of it or not.
Sir, you have to speak to the...
Okay. So, you want to actually pay a lot of attention, recognize that there's deception out there. There are people who are trying to cheat you. If you want to keep the library, it's proposal one. The whole idea, I know there are a lot of people who would actually support, you know, the no-new-taxes group in many different ways, but this deception is really offending a lot of people. It's very blatant, it's very obvious. Why do we have three copies of basically the same proposal? It's just to split the vote. Okay? There's one proposal, proposal one, vote yes on proposal one. So I really want to encourage the people who are in the no-tax community, there are a lot of people who would support you, but the library is a very American entity. Benjamin Franklin started it. You know, information is one of the core values of an American culture. We really need to support that. The library is a center for that type of information, for that type of usage. We want to maintain that. For those who are trying to stop it, you know, separate, you know, the battle with no-new taxes from the library. Library is an American thing. I know there's a lot of concerns with the city and how money's spent one way or another. Separate that issue from the library. The library, and that's what this proposal does. It separates the city and all the arguments of how money is spent from the library so that you don't have that argument, you don't have that threat of the library closing. We really do want to maintain this. It's for the community, it's for your own good from a property values. You're going to have a lot of people who don't want to come to your community without a library. You really do want to support the library and the separation. Yeah, there might be a little hit from a tax perspective, but in order to support the community and your housing values, you want to support proposal one. Thank you for this time. Appreciate it.
Our County Commissioner, Tim Burns.
Good evening. I'm just going to give you a quick intermission from the library debate to give you a brief update on the county. I'm pleased to tell you that as of October 1st, our fiscal year 2011 began, and we entered that with a balanced budget that we approved a few days before that date. And that balanced budget is done without any deficit spending and without any tax increases. It keeps our millage rate at 4.19, which is one of the lowest in the state. I'm also pleased that in addition to approving the budget for October 1st through October 1st of next year, we also approved tentative budgets for 2012 and 2013. So we approved a three-year budget process, which again is balanced for that three-year term, and it freezes our tax rate at the same rate it's been for about the last 10 years. So we're trying to be as responsible and efficient as we can with your county dollars, and we're hoping that that will help us keep our AAA bond rating, which we're one of the few counties in the country to have that. Everyone here seems to be talking about taxes tonight, so I did want to tell you about a new service that I helped co-sponsor through the county. It's called Track Your Taxes. It's a new online feature. If you go to oakgov.com/boc for Board of Commissioners, look for the menu option, it says Track Your Taxes, and on there, it gives you reviews of the same monthly budget reports that all of our department managers see. So it gives our taxpayers, because it's your money, you should know how it's being spent, how our resources are coming in, and it lets you have convenient access 24 hours a day from a computer. You can go in and look at that information, and you'll have the same information many of the decision-makers at Oakland County are using on a monthly basis. So I'm pleased to promote transparency in government, and again, it's called Track Your Taxes, and it's online at oakgov.com/boc. I want to thank everyone who gave DVDs for the Patriot Week donation drive that I hosted at the Troy Police Department in the VFW Hall on Maple Road. We collected over 1,000 DVDs. Some of those are going to go down to the VA Hospital in Detroit, some are going to go to Battle Creek and some other ones, and we're going to make sure that they get distributed, if not locally, to VA hospitals around the country. Finally, my television show has a new episode on now. I'm interviewing Supreme Court Head Justice Marilyn Kelly. She's an Oakland County resident. Tells us a little bit about the Supreme Court. And my TV show is on Comcast and Wow, which is Channel 18 on both stations. Mondays at 1:30 PM, Tuesdays at 8:00 PM, and Thursday mornings at 8:00 AM. So if I can ever be of assistance to anyone, my phone number is 248-275-1826. Website's timothyburns.org. Always glad to help out when I can. It's been a privilege to serve the community of Troy for four years as your county commissioner. I will be up for reelection this November as a Democrat candidate, and appreciate everybody's support. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Thomas Burke.
Thank you. Just quickly, to keep on another subject, I wanted to clarify a comment I made two weeks ago about the distracted driver law. I wasn't trying to indicate that the warnings that were given out had a fee associated with them. It was the rate in which those tickets were being given out. A hundred a month is what the newspaper reported. If you continue at that rate, it's 1,200 tickets a year. They're $200 apiece. That's $240,000 of fines with supposedly no points attached. Seems to me like it is about the money, it's not about the points. And talking more about money, you know, we keep hearing about the anti-library people. I have not heard a single person anywhere talk about being anti-library. They talk about being anti-tax. If you want to find the facts, I'd ask everybody to do two things. Go to the Save the Library website and go to Troy Citizens United's website. You will find factual financial data on Troy Citizens United's website. You will find nothing on the Save the Library website. Look at the flyers that are coming in the mail from the pro-tax group. They have frowning children, frowning senior citizens. I'm waiting for the next one that has puppies on it, but there's no data. One of the earlier speakers said he got a copy of the Troy Citizens United flyer that's come out. I'm not sure what he didn't like about that. He could not mention a single thing. Perhaps he didn't like the fact that it says your taxes could go up 30% with this new organization. If you don't like that, perhaps you should read Ms. Bloom's memo that's attached to the packet tonight. It'll tell you the same thing. Perhaps he didn't like the fact that the TCU flyer says that the new authority will not gain immediate access to the library premises or equipment or books. They'll have to buy them or lease them or work out some other deal. Perhaps that's because none of that is stated on the Save the Library website, although it is in Ms. Bloom's memo. I really thank Commissioner Burns for coming here tonight and telling us that government can balance their budget, not dump their library out on the public, not politicize any of things, and not raise taxes. This is what this is about. It's a raise of taxes. One of the other speakers talked about, this was already voted on in February, it's voted no. Please continue on. And one last comment about budgets. Everybody says the library's going to close because it's in the budget. Well, I think if we look at tonight's handout, on page three, item I-5, shows that a $208,000 budget item miraculously appeared out of nowhere because it amended budget. The budget could be amended and the library come back in, just like that.
Mrs. Daniels, before you speak, I'm going to call the next five people. Ed Kempin, Tom Krant, Aaron Green, Jeannie Stein, and Rhonda Hendrickson. Would those people come behind Mrs. Daniels?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I want to point out, first of all, that this is not a democracy. This is a republic. It's representative republic, and that's why it's so important that we choose our representation carefully, because we can have a majority of tax and spenders on a board such as yours, and then every opportunity that you use is to raise taxes to support various projects. When you developed your budget, you didn't have to completely defund the library and leave $2 million for undesignated trails. Now, I questioned that, and somebody said, well, that $2 million has been moved over to other things. And I said, other things? Okay, why wasn't it moved over to the library? Well, because it's moved over to help police and fire. So that's how easy a budget can be moved. We have a transit center that we've budgeted $9.4 million to in this first year. The transit center that is right now embroiled in a lawsuit to where you don't even know if you have the land available for this transit center. So you've got $9.4 million sitting in a budget for a transit center that may never be. If you were going to be, if you were going to hold your fiduciary responsibility to all of the citizens of this fair city, not just the tax and spenders, you could allocate $2.5 million for the library, at least for the first year, so that we have time to assess where our economy is going, what is happening to the country as well as to the city. We're in the middle of a war. We have some real difficult times ahead of us, but that doesn't mean that you should be setting aside $9.4 million for the transit center to nowhere and then defund our library? And they talk about deception on the part of the no-tax people? We're not no-tax people. We're fiscally responsible people. We want to see our board be fiscally responsible. That's one of my points that I wanted to make. I also see that a lot of people are expressing emotion instead of objectivity. I think the people that come here with objective facts also have emotions. We also came to this city because of its wonderful services. We love the library. I use it regularly. I brought my son here to go to school because I wanted the quality school, the quality education for him. But don't the emotional people have any ability to look at the objective facts? We're not lying. This isn't deception. If there's deception, it's not on our part. But this is the brochure that shows facts. The fact is that 20 people in the city government, the city of Troy, the top wage earners, compensation packages exceed $3.5 million a year for 20 people.
Mrs. Daniels?
We have room.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vote no on all four. And I've got a petition with us.
Next, we'll hear from Ed Kempin, and then the next speaker should be Tom Krant before Mr. Green. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are in a predicament here in the city. You know, we've been living in America in a big real estate bubble that was established under a lot of the other policy and government interactions with really the private enterprise, creating distortions in a marketplace. And this real estate bubble did something also to Troy. It created a municipal funding bubble. Well, the real estate bubble, as you're aware, is now gone. Now we're trying to figure out exactly where the bottom is. We're not sure. We can take worst-case projections and use that as a basis for a tax increase to sustain us, or we could take realistic projections, and we're not exactly sure where the future is. But one thing that is certain is the spending here continues. We've got lots of new spending projects online that keep coming up, and we're not being responsible with our funds. These funds are the taxpayers. They belong to the people and demanding them and demanding that we dig into our own pockets to keep the library open while we continue to spend on other projects that aren't as important as our library. I would suggest even that maintaining the roads to the level that we are is a little bit excessive and beyond the, or less than the value of our library. A lot of things are wrong right now. There's magic in proposal one to four decimal places, and I don't remember magic with head four decimal places, but somehow that arrived. There's a well-thought-out plan that has lots of details in it, but somehow it has never materialized in our magic. Proposal one, if it doesn't reveal the magic behind the numbers, really is just a scam. We need to expose the numbers, share our plan with the public, if you expect to have any faith, because if we haven't seen these numbers, the only safe alternative is to vote it down until we have a chance to do it. I urge people to support the library with no new taxes. It's a tax-free alternative to reallocate budget funds and keep our library open, and I would expect everyone to vote no on proposal one and the other three sham proposals. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom Krant.
Good evening. I've been a homeowner in Troy for 32 years, and I've witnessed the positive energy from both city employees and residents alike that have built this city into the wonderful place it is to live, work, learn, and play. Unfortunately, over the last six years or so, some people in our city are vigorously trying to bring our city down. They want to lower the city's standards and the quality of life. I've never seen anything improve or even remain the same by lowering standards and quality. We are not an award-winning city by chance. We became that by a lot of careful planning and hard work. I'd hate to see that lost. A verse from an old song by Joni Mitchell says it best regarding the closing of our library next July. For those who don't remember the words, they are, "You don't know what you've got till it's gone. And once it's lost, what will it cost to bring it back?" I'm sure the cost of bringing it back would be much more than just maintaining what we have. And it will be gone unless the voters of Troy get out and vote yes for proposal one, the one proposal that the Friends of the Troy Public Library supports. And for those of you who don't know, the Friends of the Troy Public Library was founded in 1958. It has donated over $100,000 a year for years to our library. In 2009, the Friends contributed over 10,000 hours of service to the Troy Public Library. It's the real thing. Don't be fooled by Ed Kempin's version called Friends of the Library with No New Taxes. Why do you think he chose the word Friends in naming his petition drive? Well, it's obvious to me. Names by association always pop up in politics. And then there's the deception of the other three proposals. It's an obvious attempt to confuse voters and split the vote. I hope citizens in Troy see through that deception and its attempt to derail the democratic process. And then there's the absurd math. Some are putting out flyers, like the people we're holding up earlier, saying your taxes are going to go up 30.6%. Do the math for yourself. Troy residents pay about 35.7 mils of property tax. The new total would be about 36.69 mils if proposal one passes. .9885 is about 2.7% of the 36.69 mils. That's reality. That's real math. The point is, don't be fooled by imitators, half-truths, and all-out lies. Go for the real thing. I urge everyone to vote yes on proposal one and no to the other proposals. Thank you.
Aaron Green?
Hello there, Council. I am not yet a resident of Troy. I will be moving here this November in order to be closer to the woman that I love. However, I found out that the library was planning to be closed, and so I wanted to be here to say something about it. When I was growing up, I used to come to this library a lot because you had the best selection, you had the best availability, you had great librarians, you had computers, both in quality and quantity before many people, audiobooks, everything. And electronic resources, you've spanned counties by working with both the Oakland County Consortium and with the Macomb County. And that's fantastic, but the library looking at closing is absolutely horrific. Now, whether you agree, those of you out there, agree with the people who say that the money is there and that the council is not dealing with it appropriately, whether that's the case or not, that's irrelevant. What is the case is the council has allocated the money, and that's how they have chosen to allocate the money, and that's something that we need to deal with separately. Currently, what has to be dealt with is that the library is not funded, and the only way to fund that is going to be supporting proposal one. Supporting the rest of the proposals will not work. It'll split the vote. It's a terrible thing. They are a sham. It's a huge problem, but proposal one can get it done. Without that, the library closes. We've had students up here talking about what a wonderful thing the library is for them. I used to use it all the time. I still do. We've had people talking about how having a district library as opposed to a city-run library is an option, an ability for them to... an ability for them to flaunt the city's rules and ignore the city and make their own rules. That's not the case. I work in a community with the district library, and the district library functions fantastically, and it does work with the city. In fact, it works with two cities, and it works very well, and it does the best that it can to work within the city framework, and yet it still remains independent. And independent is not private. Independent means that it is still, is subject to its citizens. This is a millage. It's taxed. It is overseen. This board is appointed. It's not, it's not just arbitrary. And it's just unbelievable that people would say no to the library just because they want to play chicken with the city council about a budget. This isn't about the budget. This is about the library. This country was founded by people who loved libraries, who loved books. Libraries throughout history have done wonderful things. They helped tradesmen learn their trades, give them jobs, which is what the library does now via e-resources, via letting people get onto Michigan Works, on Monster, on resumes, and they raised women up. It's amazing what they've done, but without a library, we're gone, so vote Proposal One.
Thank you. Jeannie Stein, former mayor and councilwoman?
As a 48-year resident of this community, I think of the library as its heart. In approximately 36 weeks, that heart is going to close. Our library is going to close. You, the city council, voted on May 10 to remove it from future budgets due to decreased revenue, which cannot be stretched to include the library. Now, there is a petition being circulated to pass an ordinance to mandate a tax-free Troy Public Library open 55 hours a week under local government control. With our city's limited resources, I can only imagine a kiosk with a few paperbacks in the lobby of City Hall. There is no money to staff the library, no money for new materials, no money for heating the facility, no money for regular maintenance, no money for snow removal, no money for landscaping, and the list goes on and on. The only responsible avenue to keep the library open is to vote, to make it an independent resource governed by a body of responsible, elected, unpaid citizens. Then the library will truly be a public library. And the only way to make this happen is to vote yes for Proposal One and no on all the other bogus proposals which have been placed on the ballot to confuse and abuse the voters of Troy. If we continue on this irresponsible path, Troy will become an unfriendly, unattractive, unwanted place to live and to do business. This city council has an obligation to repeatedly communicate the facts to the citizens of Troy and convince them that you are not lying about the lack of finances to keep the library open as you are accused of doing by Troy Citizens United. I would also like to address the misinformation regarding the requested .9885 mils. It is only .9885 mils and cannot be elevated to a higher rate because it cannot be higher than what the voters approve. Also, the .9885 mils is not based on the assessed value of your property, but on the taxable value, a big difference. My assessed value is $189,500, close to $200,000, but my taxable value is only $89,700, meaning that I would only pay an additional $88, equating to $1.70 a week. And as home values continue to go down, that figure will also go down. Let's enjoy an independent library that operates 60 hours a week under the same policy Rochester Hills, Bloomfield Township, Pontiac, Wixman, and many other Michigan libraries do. Vote to have an independent library vote, board for accountability and transparency. Vote yes for Proposal One and no on all the others.
Rhonda Hendrickson?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Wow. I just want to say that, you know, the Johnny-come-latelys about this library amuse me. We've been at this for seven months. It's become obvious that there is a real and concerted effort in Troy to have our electoral process tampered with. The newspaper has finally confirmed what the Citizens to Save Troy Public Library have been saying for months, that the other three proposals on the ballot in November were bogus and a deliberate attempt to confuse and deceive the voters of Troy. That is why it is critical that voters vote yes on Proposal One to prevent the library from closing. It is the only proposal that is backed by organizations and individuals who care about the long-term success for our library, our children, our seniors, and our neighbors who need it most. Now, there is a new ruse to deceive voters, an unfunded mandate for a city library. This effort is a new twist on a familiar theme of lies. The document paid for and mailed by Troy Citizens United this weekend is filled with them. They clearly have no knowledge or are lying about Michigan state law. Contrary to what they say, the law is very specific. The library board is not a taxing authority. It has no legal authority to raise taxes, issue debt, or bonds. The ballot proposal calls for .9885 mils, and that is all. The amount is approved by voters and no more. The outrageous lies that are being spread about the library are unconscionable, and they do it with impunity. They must have so little respect for the residents of Troy that they would put an essential civic asset in danger of permanent closure to forward their agenda. They know nothing about how the public library operates, nor do they care. They lie about the cost. They lie about the law. They lie about the authority of the board, and they lie about what this proposal means to citizens. The people behind this are perpetrating a fraud on our community, and it must stop. This petition they are circulating will not prevent the library from closing. Despite the empty promises of their petition, the library will close next year. They know nothing about it, what is required to operate it, other than saying a mandated 55 hours. They have no idea what that really means. Keeping a city library open for 55 hours is just a piece of a very large puzzle to keep the library, having its accreditation, its state funding, and so on. What Troy residents can do to clear up the confusion is to come to the source. The Friends of the Troy Public Library have been working on this plan for seven months for the success of the library. We've been out front. We've been open. We've been talking to people. We've held public forums, and unlike these other political operatives using deception, we have nothing to hide. Proposal One will prevent the library from closing. 100% of the funds will go to the library, an independent library board elected by you. The citizens of Troy, nonpartisan and unpaid, will administer the library and be accountable to you. We're asking, don't be fooled. Vote yes on Proposal One to keep our 47-year library open in our city. Thank you.
That concludes those that signed up to speak, and next we'll have response or reply to public comment. And I'd like to clear up one thing right from the get-go. The dedicated federal funds for the transit center are non-transferable. They cannot be used for the library. They are for a specific purpose. They are designated for that and that alone, coming from transportation funds. It cannot be used for the library, and I want that made very clear from the get-go for those that are unclear about that. Counsel, did you have things that you wanted to respond or reply to or ask administration to clear up?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Horlick?
Well, I just wanted to start off, just a quick protocol issue. One thing that I understand people on both sides of many issues are very passionate about it. My concern as a, as a, as a public body here, as a member of a public body, is I think we need to be careful with coming to a, when we have public comment, to advise people not to attack individuals because of the, you know, just decorum for one, common sense for another. And the third is the, the legal issues that they could potentially be putting themselves into. And I know that was mentioned by Councilwoman Kirwin last week, and I would like to ask the city attorney, the, just to clarify the, the differences between proving slander or libel on a public official versus doing that for a private individual. And it's my understanding that the threshold for a private individual is much lower than it is for a public official like me.
Mrs. Bloom?
Madam Mayor, yes, Councilman Horlick, you have correctly stated that there are different standards, and that is something, of course, that would happen in a private cause of action. It would not be something that the city would participate in. But, but you, but members of the public are cautioned that there could be ramifications for libel or slander if it occurs.
Counsel, Councilman Snyder, did I hear you sing-along?
Yes.
Yes.
A couple of things, but first, if I could ask city administration, we've heard some talk about mandating a library, and we know that we're cash-strapped. Could you respond or would you like some time to respond? What would happen? Obviously, that would have some effect on our budget. Could you speak to where that money would come from? I would assume that it would throw, throw our current budget back to the table, so to speak.
That's correct. For several meetings for over a year now, when we realized that we were having a declining revenue line, and our revenue lines, even though they go out a couple of years, three years, are fairly accurate. I think we were about 99% accurate, John, this past year. Yeah, 99% accurate. So we know essentially what our revenue line is going to be. And a budget is not about spending money, per se. It's about finding the revenue line and then having expenditures match that line. And what the city council decided to do, based on a declining revenue line, was to give preference to what's called public safety issues, which is police, fire, and infrastructure maintenance. And by doing that, the quality-of-life venues, the library, the museum, the nature center, the community center, if it cannot be self-funded, would have to be expunged. And that's because most of our costs, our personnel costs, we have six labor unions at this time. We're negotiating concessions, but the cuts that we have to make are so great that we can't take them on the backs of our employees. Through attrition and layoffs, I've reduced the workforce from our peak of about 2,004, 2,005, over 20%. When we're finished, without an increase in revenue, we'll have reduced our, our full-time staff by over 35%. So that left the council essentially with, with two major choices, if you will, in terms of meeting a declining revenue line. One was to protect the quality-of-life venues and have everyone take an equal hit, if you will, for every department to keep these venues open, and that would result in the layoffs of 20 more police officers than we currently plan laying off at the end of fiscal year 1314. At that year, we're going to be looking at revenues in the police department, or I'm sorry, manpower levels in the police department that mirror 1978 for patrol levels. And a lot of you were here in 1978. You knew what we were then. That's what we're going to have to patrol now without an increase in revenue. So we can't assume an increase in revenue, so we modified our budgets to try to have less of an impact on those police-fire-public-works venues. And I'm sorry for the long answer, but it requires one. Should council decide to have a change of heart, if you will, you can always amend the budget. We can't print money, so what you have to do is take money away from items that we currently have allocated and put them somewhere else. Again, the cuts are so deep that if you wanted to save a quality-of-life venue that would cost at least $2, $3 million a year, you would go to the police department, and that's because we're laying off of individuals in all the other departments to the point I'm thinking of perhaps on sustainability before three years is up. But the short answer is yes, you can reallocate funding, and you can do that through a budget amendment.
So, to sum it up, we passed, the majority passed a budget to transfer the money that would be allocated for a library to public safety. If we went back and man, had to have a library, we would have to take the funds from public safety where we transferred the money to. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Oh, I have one more, but I'll wait.
Would anyone else like to respond or ask our clarification? Councilman McGinnis?
I was just wondering if someone, probably the chief, could clarify the fees collected from distracted driving ordinance. I know that a number was thrown out there, multiplying the amount of the ticket by 1,200 tickets that we're going to be writing a year, and I think there needs to be some clarification about how those fees are broken down. I know we've gone over it several times.
In addition to that, could you clarify where the money goes? Because my understanding, it doesn't all come to us. Chief?
I'll do my best, and you can tell me if I answered the question. We, we have not written any tickets yet under our distracted driving ordinance. We've written some under the state law. The latest number I got for warnings and violations is nine that we have so far that fall under our standards that we are tracking. That's nowhere near 1,200. I have no idea where any of those numbers came from, so I can't answer that because I have never heard that. I don't have that information. I know that our numbers, our fines go through the court, and then most of the money goes to the court. There's a portion of that that comes back to the city. I don't have that number available with me right now with that percentages.
Your Honor, I think it was $14 that would go back to the city based on the PowerPoint presentation by Captain Mott when chief was out of town.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.